...to make our phone calls in rotation.
We'll see what we can do.
That reminds me of another street light question. Are the new lights on Carroll Avenue working? Because they were not working.
I don't believe they are, Councilmember Williams. I know we have been in contact with Pepco, as has, I know Councilmember Austin Lane has also made some outreach efforts. We'll follow up with Mr. Daley sometime this week and see what the status of that is.
Yeah, because I noticed when the, what I assume are the new decorations went up that included lights that plug into the lights, and gee, they're there, but nothing's happening.
Just to keep the council apprised, we, I announced last week that Jane Raskin is having a healthcare forum at Montgomery College, and the date has been changed from December 1st, this Friday, to December 15th, two weeks from this Friday. And it's still at 12 noon in the Health Sciences Building on the first floor. What else did I want to add? Also, it does, I did get confirmation that Mrs. Hevia has now moved into the new home, 7133 Carroll, and she's very pleased with everything, and all the documents that were needed have been forthcoming, and I'm very pleased at what the council and the city, the community, Historic Tacoma, what we have all accomplished in this first step towards rebuilding the fire station. And I thank you all for the many years that we have labored over this project.
And I think we have some folks here from Historic Tacoma who also spent some time working on that issue, and want to thank them also. Anyone else? All right, we have in front of us one set of minutes from October 23rd.
Move it option.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Minutes for October 23rd are adopted. The next item is the public comment period. We will have a time just following the city manager's update when we do a resolution recognizing Mark Elrich. So if you have comments on that, I'd ask if you'd hold those comments until we get to that point. But if you have comments on anything that is not on a regular meeting agenda, or any other topic that you'd like to bring before the council, this would be the appropriate time to do so. Are there any public comments? All right, seeing none, we will move, we will move to the city manager's update.
Yeah, just two brief items this evening. Just wanted to remind everyone that the ANCL Architects will be making a presentation to the city council a week from tonight on the gym feasibility study. Unrelated to the community center, I did want to mention to the council that I had sent a letter last week to Royce Hansen, Chair of the Planning Board, concerning the city's funding request for FY08. Staff is also working on some correspondence to other applicable county agencies regarding our funding request to further advance the council's goals. So as always, we'll make sure that you get copied on that correspondence. That concludes my report, unless there's questions about any particular items. Thank you.
Okay, we are moving on to the first item on our regular meeting agenda, which is a resolution recognizing Mark Elrich, and I'd like to move this myself.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, it's before the council. I was trying to remember, when the first time I met Mark, was exactly before you even got on the council, because I'm sure Mark doesn't remember this, but it was in the late 80s, I think. And I was interested in, I forget whether it was Silver Spring Development Traffic or something like that, and went to this big public meeting or public hearing or something. And I remember very vividly, Mark was both the loudest and the most knowledgeable person in the room.
Nothing's changed.
Well, I was going to say, I was going to say, that I think as he's gotten more experience, Mark has learned to sort of downplay the loud while keeping the knowledgeable. And he certainly deserves a lot of credit for winning a very competitive race for the county council. The other thing that I've always admired about Mark is he's very committed to the well-being of the least privileged members of our community, and that's always been a very clear priority of his and one that he invariably follows. And he brings his wealth of knowledge and commitment to help the folks that really need his help. And I have always admired that, and we look forward to continuing to work with you on the county council and continuing to work for the betterment of the people who need our help the most.
And to follow up on your comment, Mayor Porter, about Mark watching out for those in the community who are sometimes the least advantaged in many ways, something else that ties into that that I think is very important is the growth that Mark has shown in also being able to work with and understand some of the needs of, let's say, business owners or other interests that maybe have a little more advantage in working the system and in forging compromise with all the members of the community to try and come up with a win-win situation. And I've seen that growth in the time that I've known Mark, and it's a pretty special ability to watch out for those who are least advantaged while also working with other members of the community to try and get something for everybody. I was thinking about when I first met Mark, and I think it was when I was, when there was a forum, oh, in the early 90s, and it was about, it resulted in the Task Force on Family Diversity. And I remember that Mark and my predecessor on the council, Hank Prensky, who's in the audience, were the two members of the council who were immediately very supportive of many of the issues that came up in that forum and pushed for the city to do a number of things, including the efforts that resulted in domestic partnership benefits, where the city was one of the leaders in the country in doing that. I also really value Mark as the institutional memory for this body. You've now finished 19 years on the city council. And I know that one of the advantages of winning the county council seat and not doing a 20th year on the council is that you will not have to be inducted into the Municipal Officials Hall of Fame of Maryland Municipal Union Miss. And I know that that's something that you appreciate not having to do. Yeah, yeah, but I kind of thought maybe you'd think of that as the old farts club. And you didn't want to go there. But I really appreciate having known you all this time and being able to work with you and seeing the great things that you've done, and knowing that the residents of Montgomery County, the residents of the region, the residents of the state are going to have an increased and renewed appreciation for those abilities that you're going to bring to the county council.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. Well, first, Mark, congratulations on your successful campaign. As Mayor Porter pointed out, it was a hard-fought race, and you did an excellent job. I guess the many years of experience you had running campaigns at the county level helped, but I think the vote that we saw in both in the primary and the general election showed the level, high-level support we're getting from the county residents. You know, when I think back of my time here on the city council, I really appreciate the help that you gave me as I struggled to grow into being a council member. You supported me sometimes even when I think you didn't agree with me, and you helped me to temper some of my opinions and see the other side, which I found to be very helpful. I've always appreciated and been impressed with your creativity in addressing the issues that come before this council, and I think that's going to serve the county residents well if you move on to the county council. I'm, in a way, a little sorry to see you go, because I feel you're a friend here on the council and a friend in our community, and I know that your being on the county council may lead you to believe you're going to see me less. But since you are at the county level, and since I have interests that I think go down some of the similar paths to yours, I'm hopeful that I'm going to be seeing you much more. Congratulations.
I think that, I'm actually glad that you're going on to the council, to the county council, not because I want you to leave the city council, but because I think it'd be really good for the county. I think I've said that to you before, I think that, you know, with all of the perspective that you have on what it means to be a city in the state of Maryland, and how important that is to the folks here in Tacoma Park and across, in cities that are across the county, I think that that's going to be really helpful, and I think it's going to be a good thing for all of us in Tacoma Park and all of the people in the county. So, you know, while I think, like the others, I'd be sad to see you go from a friendship perspective and from the perspective of having somebody to bounce ideas off of and to argue endlessly with, I'm really happy for the county, and I think it's to all of our benefit. So I think that, for me, I think that that really outweighs any sadness that I feel about you going, because I'm just, I'm really excited for the potential there. And I wish you the best.
First met Mark several years ago when I was thinking about running for the city council, and everyone said, "You've got to go and talk to Mark." And I don't think I'd met him before, maybe just once in passing, went over to his house and was welcomed in, he poured me a cup of coffee, and it was a little bit like a scene from The Graduate. No, he wasn't Mrs. Robinson. But, you know, you may remember that scene when, I think it was Mrs. Robinson's husband talking to the Dustin Hoffman character and said, "You've got to really invest in plastics." And so Mark had this sort of impish grin on his face, and he pulled out a postcard, and he said, "This is what you've got to do." And the postcard was from his previous attempt at running for the council, and he said, "This really worked. Talk to me about how you constructed it, what you say in it, and I tried it, and it was quite successful." And so I have to thank him for that. But there was so much more. You know, I try to think back on what I can learn from all of my colleagues here in the three years that I've been on the council, and in Mark's case, it's pretty easy to generalize the lessons that I have learned from Mark. One, of course, is his encyclopedic knowledge of issues. And when he was running for the council, I remember one night I went to one of his fundraisers, and he held forth for quite some time on development issues and how to fix the education system. And I was just riveting. He was so knowledgeable about it, and so well-versed, and was able to articulate it in such a clear fashion that it just impressed me, you know, very profoundly. The other thing that he taught me, I think, is the passion that he has for his work and the caring way that he really approaches his feelings towards his constituents and people, especially those who need someone like Mark to help be their champion. And the other lesson is his persistence. He, and let's face it, the man is a living embodiment of the argument for term limits. And, you know, he just, he has this way of never giving up on anything, and just keeps coming back and back, armed with new arguments and more proofs, and to me, that's a very important quality. And I think the other, the last thing is his utter fearlessness, where he's never afraid to wade into the deepest thicket, the most emotionally charged situations, not with guns blazing, but really, again, armed with good arguments and good ideas about how to convince people, move them off their positions, and maybe towards some new perspective. So for all of those things, Mark, and a lot of others, thanks a lot, and good luck. We're going to continue working with you.
I want to thank Mark. I was very heartened by the outcome of the election, and there's two things that really come to mind when I think about Mark's work, and they are, he has a very progressive approach on both local and national issues, and I've appreciated that during my tenure on the council because of the many local issues that we've worked on together and achieved important progress on. And the second thing is the big-picture approach that he takes both to city policy and to the county. And it was for that reason that I was very happy when he decided to go in the at-large direction, because I think he will bring that big-picture approach to his position on the county council. I'm proud of the campaign he ran, I'm proud of the collaborative style that he has honed over the years, and I believe that because of his long tenure on the city council, it's, he has a different equation for success than many people would have thought it was a long shot to win the fifth time around, but in Mark's case, it was fifth time's the charm. So, Mark, I just want you to know how much I appreciate the projects that you and I have spearheaded together and the progress that we've made on them. The fire station comes to mind, the Metropolitan Branch Trail and Metro Development were both helped along by your assistance, and the city manager's transition was also an important accomplishment. And that's just what I know well from being on the council for five years, but I know you've been on much longer than that, and I know you've accomplished many things that you can be proud of and that you can build on as you rise to the next level. So, thank you.
Before I open it up to public comment, I just wanted to make sure that people had a copy of the resolution that we're looking at. I think there's some copies over there. When you look at it, you'll notice that the margins are a little narrower than usual. A number of people contributed to the resolution, and we tried to put in a little bit about all the things that Mark's done. And when you try and cram all the things that Mark's done onto one sheet of paper, you end up with very narrow margins, because he's done a great deal in his 19-plus, 19 years on the council, and more years as a community activist before that. Okay, is there any public comments on this resolution? Anybody want to make a comment on the resolution? Don't everyone look at everyone else.
Everybody wants to be laughed.
Well, I'll close the comment period if we won't get somebody to speak. Okay.
I'm Howard Cohn. You know, during this long, long election year, I ran into a number of people, and I would say to them, "You know, I think Mark's going to win this time." And more often than not, they would say to me, "Well, you know, I have mixed feelings about that." And we're talking about friends of Mark here, supporters of his. It is true, as I heard that, there are reasons to have mixed feelings. You know, some of that's already been spoken to, but one person who told me that was Tom Perez. Now, that's because Tom has a daughter who attends Rolling Terrace, and Tom's daughter was about to enter Mark's math class. And so there are many, many parents and students much loved, who much loved Mark over the years, and not only at Rolling Terrace, but other kids who he tutored in his free time. I, myself, referred a number of students to him. It's a side of Mark probably never appreciated by those of us out here in the gin mill of politics. And of course, his neighbors, his constituents in Ward 5. Mark is someone who never forgot that half the people in this town live in apartments, not in houses, and he has stood up for Ward 5. But he's also stood up and worked hard for everybody across the city, you know, and that's how I know Mark, is someone who's worked at a citywide level and, in fact, at a countywide level. And now, of course, he gets to step on that bigger stage, work on those issues that will be the good fortune not only of us in Tacoma Park, but everyone who lives in Montgomery County. I will say that, you know, I've done a number of these tributes, and most of the time, I have to say at the end, "Well, you know, good luck, I hope to see you someday." But with Mark, even though he's leaving the city council, he's not really going anywhere. So, Mark, congratulations. See you tomorrow.
I'm Eileen Sobek. I live on Carroll Avenue, and when I first moved here in 1990, Mark was my city council member, and I was in Ward 5. And I didn't quite realize how lucky I was until I realized that we were going to be redistricted out of Ward 5, and I came and testified here before the council about how I thought that my part of the neighborhood, which had always been in Montgomery County, it made sense for it to be, to remain part of Ward 5 and blah, blah, blah. And while I really think that that was fabulous testimony, and I really believed it, there was actually a pretty big part of me that was really worried about losing Mark as an advocate for my part of the neighborhood. And it turns out that we didn't lose Mark as an advocate for our neighborhood, even though we are now in Ward 2 and we're very happy with our representation. We now have more than one advocate who really thinks about issues that are important to our community. And I've worked on some specific issues with Mark, and nobody has provided wiser counsel. And I think that he's one of the few examples. I'm in public service, but, and I see a lot of people who work for various levels of government, but I see very few people who are as passionate and as principled as Mark is. And to be able to do that day in and day out without the least, without one grain of hypocrisy is really incredible. And we really owe it to you, Mark, for all the things that Tacoma Park has accomplished and all the things that it is known to stand for throughout the community of the state and the larger area. And I'm actually thinking that we're going to be annoyed at Mark pretty soon, because he is so principled that he's going to do what's right for the county, even if we find it irritating in Tacoma Park. He is going to look out for the larger interests of the county and his constituency at large, even when it's not what we want here in Tacoma Park. I'm sure that he'll help us bring home the bacon here when it's appropriate, but I think that is the mark of his courage and passion. And when I first started paying attention to the council and council issues, I sort of thought of Mark as being kind of a firebrand and kind of going out on a limb, but in working with him on specific issues, what I've actually marveled at is his skill as a reasonable negotiator. And his ability to step, as somebody on the council said, to step back from a very charged situation and find out what is reasonable and what is really the best solution for all parties is really a rare quality and one that we should really value and that we are really lucky, going to be lucky to have at the county level. So, thank you, Mark. Good luck.
My name is Hank Prensky. I live at 7921 Sligo Creek Parkway. I'm here to speak about Mark Elrich. That's not Ehrlich. I had the pleasure to serve with Mark on the city council for two terms, 1989 to 1993. These were his second and third of 10 terms on the city council. During the time that I spent with him, Mark was my most reliable ally as a progressive political force here in Tacoma Park. He championed affordable housing in the guise of the city's rent stabilization laws. He always took seriously the city's laws related to our nuclear free zone law, which attempts to deny the profitability of the nuclear weapons industry. Mark supported democratic and humanitarian efforts to help the residents of Santa Marta in El Salvador, our sister city, who were ravaged then by the US-sponsored wars on the poor of Central America. Mark, in fact, traveled to El Salvador to represent the city, but was unable to leave the capital city due to the extreme danger and the unwillingness of the US-supported government to tolerate any attention being drawn to their oppression perpetrated against their own citizens. I was lucky enough to follow Mark several years later and travel to Santa Marta and be able to bring the good wishes and material support of the people of Tacoma Park to that war-ravaged sister city. Mark's worked long and hard on other progressive issues. We worked together on the Share the Vote campaign that ultimately resulted in Tacoma Park granting the right to vote to residents of the city who didn't happen to be citizens of the United States. We also, Mark's also been interested, we have also interacted outside of the council chambers. For quite a few years, we've met regularly on the green and grassy fields of Tacoma Park's Recreation Department Coed Softball League. We both managed to play third base for opposing teams. He was always a little bit faster, a little stronger, and a little smarter, and I would venture a little bit luckier than I. Of course, he was also about a decade younger than I. Mark is also my friend and my next-door neighbor. He worked to protect and preserve our neighborhood with his creative and frequently innovative approaches to the Washington Adventist Hospital's long and confusing battle to ultimately leave the city. The $750,000 donation that the Adventist Hospital has made over the next several years to support the community center is an idea that Mark brought to the table. All this is not to mention Mark's brilliance on development issues, which will be a major import on the county council. We have a strange situation of losing a terrific representative, but we're gaining a terrific representative. And as our British friends would say, "The council member is dead. Long live the council member."
Hooray for Mark. Noway from Pinecrest. It's been a lot of years. Some of them's been up, some of them's been down with Mark, but he's always come out here. And sometimes he was, it was really good to be critical whenever we would have a problem. And it just made me be even tougher and come out and find the right answers when I needed them if he'd come against me. So that just made me fight even harder to find the right answers when I needed them. I have a message for you from Jasmine and all the kids. They say they're going to miss you. You are going to leave school, right? Yeah, they're going to miss you. So all of them say, "Good luck, don't forget them, and make sure that you remember everybody here, so that you show up for all the events." Now, that's from the kids as well as from the area, too. So Pinecrest says, "Good luck to you, as we did you down at the BFW when we had the big to-do." I miss some of your faces, but most of you showed up. So thank you for being our representative in the area. Life Bruce, you're always there. So the rest of you, get alert to what he's done, because we need a lot more done. Bye-bye.
Anyone else?
I'm going to talk partly as city attorney. I've been city attorney the entire time that Mark's been on the council, and so I've got lots to say about that. And then also to talk as both an individual and a constituent in Ward 5 and a parent in Ward 5. First, as the lawyer for the city, I want to say, Mark really knows how to challenge us. What I enjoyed about that is if we came out in a position on a piece of legislation What I enjoyed about that is if we came out in a position on a piece of legislation or even a particular issue where Mark was representing a particular constituent, and Mark disagreed with us, he did not let go. This issue of him being tenacious and really pushing to the limit on behalf of someone in his constituency can't be stressed enough. I really, really have learned from that. I've admired that, and I think we've made some, we also have pushed the envelope as a city in terms of our laws because of that attitude. The second thing I want to say is that we've often, in the resolution, and I think some of the other speakers have talked about Mark's wanting to represent those who are poor or less powerful, minorities, et cetera. And I think Mark would not put it that way. Mark, tell me if I'm right. I think what Mark would say is that his approach is not about individual charity. It's about empowerment of communities through systemic change. And I think Mark works very hard to see things in terms of a systemic picture and try to make our community and our county now one where economic justice prevails rather than sort of be a trickle-down theory that has happened in many cases before. Mark and I are both products of the anti-war movement in our college days, where many of us felt that electoral politics was really not politically correct. And I think one of the really exciting things is that Mark has now become an embodiment of that not necessarily being true, that in fact, through electoral politics, we may really be able to present and create a community with changes and with our values that will eventually really change not only our country but the world. I think that both of my children have seen that. When they meet Mark, they get very excited. They wanted to work on electoral politics. He does stand for that in their mind, and I think he does for the newer generations. And for that, I really think we owe him an enormous debt of gratitude. So, mainly, I wanted to sum up by saying that we really will miss you on city government, but it'll be great to have you in county government because we need your help there. Thank you.
I'm Sabrina Behr, and I live on Ethan Allen Avenue, and I'm also the president of Historic Tacoma. I wanted to talk about Mark on two levels, which it seems like a lot of people are doing in this process. In my day job, I teach history at the University of Maryland in the very department that's proud to claim Mark as an illustrious alum. And I think history is the only discipline and the best training for anything and everything you can possibly want to do, and I like to think that contributes to Mark's insight and passion on various issues. On another level, it's been a pleasure to work with Mark. I appreciate all the service he's given to this community and to this council, and I'm sure we'll see the same thing at the county level, and we look forward to working with him at the county level. The thing I appreciate about Mark is not only the passion that he brings to issues, but the fact that he's a straight shooter, and he has the guts to say the things that need to be said, when they need to be said, as they need to be said. No political correctness. He has illustrated in the way his campaign for council was conducted, his aversion to greed and being swayed by the almighty dollar, which I think is something that we need so much in politics today, and I'm sure we're going to see the benefits of that as you go to the county council. So, thanks for everything you've done here, and thanks for everything you're going to do there. We're looking forward to it.
I live on Tacoma Avenue, and Mark, every time you ran before for county council, I always kind of, it was very schizophrenic for me. I always kind of wanted you to lose because I didn't want to lose you, and it was very relieved, actually, when you came back to us. And that's because you've always been such a good, strong voice for community, and we certainly always needed to have you there. But I must say that I am really happy that you won because it's time now. I think that the great Montgomery County cookie jar to development interest needs to be shut, and there needs to be an awful lot of governmental reform. And I can't think of anyone who can do that better than you because you are so very independent and so very ethical. And we need you there now. This is a very bad time for Montgomery County. I think Clarksville is just one little blip, and I suspect that as time goes on, we will find much, much more that needs to be reformed in government. And I hope there is a wave of reform coming to government, and I think because you're there, it certainly will. And so, while I hate to lose you, I think it's time, and we're looking for you to get that old shovel out and do that reform. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? I think Bruce had one additional thing he wanted to add.
Yeah, I just wanted to make brief mention of one area of Mark's abilities that nobody has mentioned. I don't know how generally known it is, but Mark is also a playwright who has written some screenplays and hopped them in Hollywood. And I don't know whether you're going to have time to do that with your increased responsibilities, but it's just one more facet of Mark that is pretty special.
Thank you. Let's say something.
Sure.
I want to thank you all.
I think we should take the vote first and then...
Maybe not. Yeah, maybe not.
Okay, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Well, it looks like you made it.
Any abstentions?
This is a really difficult time for me in some ways. I know I should be thoroughly excited and delighted, but I also recognize that I'm giving up a lot. One of the things I'm giving up is teaching, which has meant a lot to me. And it was really interesting meeting parents who confessed to me that they didn't vote for me because they voted for their child. And they were like, they wanted me to lose so I could keep teaching this year. And I thought it was just, it was actually nice that they came and told me that. If there was any reason not to vote for me, that was the best reason, because people cared about their kids. And I was really moved by people who actually came forward and told that to me. And it is hard leaving teaching, and it's hard leaving teaching especially because it's in this community. I'm lucky because I've been, I guess, like the old-fashioned teacher that you see in the movies, that the teacher lived in the neighborhood, shopped in the neighborhood, saw all the kids and the parents in the neighborhood, could go over and knock on a kid's door and torment them when they least expected it, or could run into them in the grocery store and say, "Oh, that's your parents. Let's have a little conversation." So, I felt like I had a really special relationship with the children I taught, with the community, and it certainly always informed me in terms of how I looked at some of the decisions we made on the council. When you see kids who come to school without medical care and who come to school hungry, then you think about the implications of all the decisions you make. And to be in a county as wealthy as Montgomery County and a city as prosperous as Tacoma Park and to confront hungry children and children without medical care, people whose housing is unstable and they don't know where they're going to be living from month to month, that's always affected how I look at things. The other thing that's really hard to do is give up this seat on the council. I've been doing this for 19 years. It's been a wonderful adventure. I can't think of anything I would rather have done with my life and with my time than to have served on this council. This community of Tacoma Park has been a wonderful place for me. I moved here, I guess, 26 or 27 years ago. I think it was the best decision I ever made in my life. Serving on the council is probably, and the level of reward is up there with raising my own children, being a teacher to other people's children, and being able to do something for the community. It's just offered me the opportunity to, I think, have a meaningful existence in a way that I only imagined was possible. Somebody talks about coming out of the '60s, and I'm very much part of that generation and shared the general distrust of government and the people who sit in these places, in the seats that we're in here. And none of you mentioned my early, early days when I would appear, but none of you were on the council then. When I appeared before the council meetings in my long hair, my beard, and my charming T-shirt collection, which was always good for comments. And those are some of the things I've had to give up, because the charming T-shirt collection and the long hair and the beard, they were for a different purpose and at a different time. But I went to a conference in the early '80s in Minneapolis. It was a co-op conference. I don't know if anybody mentioned, I was one of the founders of Tacoma Park Co-op here. Actually, worked in gutting and renovating the first building, and I was one of the workers in the first collective that ran the store. And we went to a co-op conference, and I had the opportunity to meet some people from Acorn. And I think some of you recognize Acorn is the name of a community organizing group that does work all around the country. And they were talking about the political situation there and how they were tired of electing people who they would work for on the promise that person would support their issue after they got elected. And invariably, after electing people, they would start hearing the, "Oh, you know, I have to weigh all these different interests, and you know, what are you going to do for me next time?" And the woman who was one of the lead organizers in Acorn said she thought it was time that we start electing our own, that we elect the people who believe in the things we believe in, who want to work for the things that we want to work for, and stop electing people who we only can hope we can persuade to do the right thing, but never be certain that they're going to do the right thing because they really don't believe it. They're calculating how many votes it takes to get elected. And that made me think about what I was doing, and it rekindled my interest in getting involved in electoral politics. And I went up on the city council here in 1987, and it was, it's been just a wonderful, wonderful ride. I've got to say that this council in the city of Tacoma Park, I think, has matured enormously. And the fact that I could get elected, that Peter Franchot is going to be sitting in Annapolis, that Tom had a very good chance of winding up winning an election, says a lot about the maturity of Tacoma Park because 20 years ago, running from Tacoma Park was a curse. And as someone who's run five times, I can tell you that the assumption was if you were from Tacoma Park, you were from Berkeley East, you were from a different part of the planet, you were, you know, there were all a bunch of assumptions about what it meant to be from Tacoma Park. But in the time I've been on the councils, the members of this council have worked tirelessly at every level of government on a myriad of issues that has established Tacoma Park as a credible place to be from. Yes, we're progressive, and we haven't backtracked in any of the progressive things we ever did, but we've also demonstrated an ability to work on the nuts-and-bolts issues that matter to lots of regular people every day. And I think that certainly served me well in the election, but I think it's served Tacoma Park well over the last several years. It's really been to our benefit. I knew that it was to our benefit in this election when one of the people I was running against, in the general, addressed the crowd and told him that the reason he was running is he was going to prevent Tacoma Park's takeover of Montgomery County. And I listened to that, and I looked at the crowd's reaction, and it was like a lead balloon. It didn't evoke anything. There was no, "What does he mean by that?" And you know, and I thought the fact that it didn't engender any kind of response was symbolic of how far Tacoma Park has come, and I thought that was a very good thing. It was good for me, but I think it's good for the city in general, and I think it speaks to the work that a lot of people have done, not just things that I've done. And so, I feel like I've been part of something that's been a growing and evolving institution in the 19 years that I've been on the council. I know that all of you up here, and I'm sure whoever, you know, the people who've come afterwards, that you'll know how to find me in Rockville. Because you've gotten so good at going to talk to people, I'm sure that I'll be one of the first people you will come and talk to. And I can assure you, I mean, one of the things I learned in this election is how little difference I think there is between Tacoma Park and anyplace else in the county. When you get down to fundamental issues and fundamental things that people care about, there's not a Tacoma Park interest versus a Bethesda interest versus a Rockville interest. We share pretty similar concerns. We go to the same schools, we drive on the same roads, we have the same lousy bus system and the same miserable mass transit system that is nowhere what it should be. We confront the same problems, and we have the same opportunities. So, I feel that it's more likely than anything I do that benefits Tacoma benefits the rest of the county, and anything I do that benefits the rest of the county will benefit Tacoma. Sort of like a progressive spin on what's good for General Motors is good for the country. I think a more enlightened way of looking at it. So, I think that, one other person I need to mention, and that's Sam Abbott, and Sam's not here, but I think like a lot of people in the city, I came here during Sam's time and was here for his election as mayor. And the energy and the sense of possibility that came with Sam and in that era, I think, is what fundamentally has made Tacoma Park a different place than the sleepy Adventist community that it was beforehand. And Sam was probably the first political practitioner that I met that I actually believed that he actually intended to make his vision into reality. And I thought it was inspiring to work with somebody and be around somebody who actually believed that what you could imagine can also be possible, and then you spend your time that you have here trying to make those things possible. So, I think I'd be remiss to not mention, but that I think I feel I owe to Sam, and I think a lot of other people owe to him as well. I'm looking forward to going to work on the council and the county council, and I think the challenges that I face are pretty significant, but I think that I take a lot of comfort in how my election turned out. First of all, Tacoma Park provided enormous numbers for me in the election, and in the primary, what was especially crucial, where you're talking about winning by a few thousand votes as opposed to winning by 90,000 votes. What came out of Tacoma Park made me first in District Five, first in District Twenty and state delegate District Twenty. This was the backbone of my support, and the precincts here were enormously supportive of me, and I'm very, very grateful for that. It certainly, I think, made an enormous difference in my campaign. I also ran a campaign on people power, and I hope that, you know, people look at that and some other changes around the state. I mean, mine was erased with no developer money. And my signs and all my literature had "No Developer Influence" prominently featured on the front of it, and I was told by the political pundits to take that off my sign. Some of my friends who I consider on the progressive side of labor said, "Get that off your sign." And I said, "No, I'm not taking it off my sign and I'm not taking it off my literature." I said, "When I handed out a piece of literature to somebody and they saw 'No Developer Influence,' that was the first thing people looked at, and you could just watch people nod their heads and say, 'It's about time.'" You know, it didn't matter whether they were Republicans, independents, or Democrats. Most people in this county know we've been getting a raw deal, and most people in the county want to see a change. And I feel that I benefited from the desire to see a change. I think in some way I demonstrated it's actually possible to run a campaign on people power and a campaign that relies on the energy of the citizens that doesn't depend on the money that comes out of the development community. And I'm proud to say that I have not a dime from that side of the table, which doesn't mean that I don't listen to it. Because I will listen to absolutely anybody, and I will talk with anybody, but no one's going to be able to come and put the squeeze on and say, "You know, you wouldn't be there if it weren't for the money we made possible to buy your ads and do your literature." And no one's going to be able to say that to me except the people. And that's where any politician should get their strength from. They should get their strength and their power from the people who want them to be their representative, not from people who can fill our campaign coffers with so much money that they turn us into irresistible forces. I would rather be victorious the way I won and lose the times I've lost the way I've lost than to have figured out a different way to win where I would have been less true to myself and not able to do the kind of things that I believe in. I've always been an activist, and I tried to take an activist role on this council. I've never been shy about working with community groups, whether it was the hospital or the anti-ICC people or the anti-incinerator people or any... anti-ICC people or the anti-incinerator people or any number of issues, people trying to preserve the Focklands and Silver Spring. I've always felt that I had an obligation not just to sit up here and say, "No, I'm an arbiter." I'm still an activist. I'm still out of the community. And I'm going to continue to work with people in the community. I don't plan on changing my role in being a sphinx that people bring positions to and I'm not, yes or no. I'm going to go out and work with citizens at the community level, help organize people when they need to be organized, help give advice when people wanted advice, and listen when people want to be heard. And those are the things I want to bring to the county council. Those are the things I think are the kind of things that can transform politics in our county. And I think that I'm in a good position to be able to do that now. I want to thank everybody up here. You've been a great group to work with. This has been, it's been challenging. I think we've, you know, gotten a lot done. I mean, I'll be the first to admit that probably the most difficult, least successful thing has been the inability to get a gem here and the problems that came out of the community center. But I think that you look at that and you say, "Yeah, that's something that got messed up." But there are a lot of other things that have been right in this city and that have been good in this city. And then I think you look at all of it on balance, it's been a much more successful series of years in the city than failures. And I think one event should not become the way that we judge everything that gets done. I noticed at the resolution, one thing you didn't mention, that as a fiscal conservative, I wish you had, which is both the decision to do an equipment replacement reserve, which leveled out our tax rates and made it so we weren't wondering where we're going to get the money to buy equipment every year. And the bonding decision that we made a couple of years ago, right before the price of asphalt and concrete went through the roof, making pretty conclusive the wisdom of that decision, given what it would have cost us to buy those materials over the next several years. We made the right decision to take out a bond and the interest on that bond is a fraction of what we would have wound up paying at the inflated price of materials today. So I'm proud of actually having been part of a good, physically conservative decision. And I hope to bring some of that fiscal conservatism to the county council. Anybody who thinks that because I'm liberal and progressive, that I have an unlimited appetite for spending money is absolutely wrong. Anybody who's seen me up here and knows my, figure those who went back to the line item budget days where I would debate whether we should buy an NCR cash register or an off-brand cash register to save $500, knows the amount of interesting in figuring out how to spend as much money as possible. Anyway, this is my last meeting. I will be back. Tom had a tradition of coming and talking to the council and I certainly feel like I will do the same. I will have to do this for lots of communities and I promise, you know, people, different civics around the county, that I will be there to talk to them. But this is one place that I'll come back to. You guys know where I live. You know my email addresses, all of them, I think. And I think you're going to find, you know, the people who work with me are going to be really accessible and civic oriented. So the door will always be open and I look forward to keeping and continuing to work with all of you. Thank you for allowing me to say as much as I got to say tonight, but it's been, it's been really good.
Well, Mark mentioned that it is his last meeting this evening and the next item that we need to take care of is setting up a process to elect someone to represent Ward Five once he leaves. And so the next item on the agenda is the first reading of an ordinance regarding the Ward Five special election, which is set for January 30th, 2007. Someone want to move it? Move it. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. There's, the city clerk has done a very good job of sort of pulling all the pieces together for this ordinance. And I think it's also worth noting that this is also going to be the first election that we have that utilizes instant runoff voting. I don't know how many candidates will put their names forward, but if there are more than two, then instant runoff voting will come into play. And so this could be an interesting election in many ways. Any comments from the council on this ordinance? Is there any public comment on this ordinance at first reading? All right, seeing no comment, this is first reading of the ordinance. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. The ordinance passes at first reading. That concludes our regular meeting agenda and we will now move to the presentation of our annual financial report for fiscal 2006.
My name is Keith Novak. I'm a partner with Clifton Gunderson. We are the auditor, external auditors for the city and we're here tonight to present our report as well as our tiered management letter. And so what I'd like to do, I don't want to take a whole lot of the council's time this evening. There were a couple of changes made to the statements this year, one of which is we prepared, or I should say, management prepared a comprehensive annual financial report, which will be submitted to GFOA for their certificate of excellence in financial reporting program. This is new to the city this year, but not new to the city in concept. When I first started working on the audit of the city a number of years ago, the city was obtaining the certificate on a regular basis. At some point, the city had decided to drop out of the program and has now decided to get back in. What this means is that your financial statements are a lot more comprehensive than they have been in the past. Generally accepted accounting principles require a certain level of disclosure in financial statement be prepared. A comprehensive annual financial report is a level above that. And what the differences are, quite frankly, are in, there are three basic sections to a CAFR, the introductory section, the financial section, and the statistical section. The financial section is the minimum requirement under generally accepted accounting principles. The introductory section, which includes a letter of transmittal and organizational chart and a list of elected and appointed officials, is something over and above that's required under the program for the certificate. The other section that is different is the statistical section, which gives trend information on various things in the city, such as property taxes, assessments, and things of that nature over a multi-year period, so that by looking at that, you can see how the city has progressed, where they had been spending their money from time to time, how net assets had increased, et cetera. There's also some demographic statistics in there about the city itself. So there's a lot of really good information in there. The only part of these financial statements that are truly mine in my firm's is the independent auditors' report. Everything else in these financial statements are the representation of management. And once again, our financial, our auditors' report, which is on page eight, is an unqualified opinion, which is the highest level of opinion that can be rendered in a financial statement. Outside of that, there's not a whole lot else in these financial statements that differ from last year to this year. There are no, there are no new note disclosures to be concerned with. There are no new disclosure requirements to be concerned with. With that said, I know that you all have just received these recently. If anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer anything that you may have.
Do you have any in the council have questions?
I might mention, this is exactly the same document minus sort of its presentation that was included in the agenda packet. It's just basically, it's bound for your, right.
Yeah, these, these tend to get rushed towards the end, so we were up against a little bit of a deadline.
All right, thank you. I'm not sure, I just got this tonight. I bet you all got this.
I might mention, this is exactly the same document minus sort of its presentation that was included in the agenda packet. It's just basically, it's bound for your, right.
Yeah, these, these tend to get rushed towards the end, so we were up against a little bit of a deadline.
All right, thank you. I just wondered if you could kind of summarize quickly any issues that you see that we need to resolve in the coming year?
The only, the only issue that was coming up from an accounting standpoint that would be required to be dealt with by any council isn't really going to pertain to the city of Tacoma Park. You're lucky you're dodging one. Other unemployment benefits is the hottest issue out there and luckily, it doesn't pertain to Tacoma Park. And that has to do with funding of healthcare that's promised to employees once they retire. We don't have, or I should say Tacoma Park doesn't have that benefit, so that's not an issue. Outside of that, I think the city has been doing a good job in monitoring.
I tried to contrast it with the recent previous years where there were some issues that needed to be resolved in our bookkeeping and.
Well, we do, we do have a couple of management level comments, however, they're nowhere near where we were a couple of years ago. As I recall, two years ago, I was meeting with this council sometime in, I believe it was February or March, because we couldn't get the books closed and we couldn't get our audit done. And last year, we improved upon that and this year, once again, it was improved upon. And this year's audit went quite smoothly, which is the way it had been up until three years ago.
Well, that's certainly reassuring to hear that and thank you, Mrs. Brooks, for that. You know, one thing that came up this year with one of our parks was that, you know, we had to change the locks on the way we handle our keys for people and distribute the keys for the community to use the park. And it was brought up as an audit issue, something that our auditor would raise objection to. And I just wonder if that's something that the city procedures are normally something that you look at or if that's just the financial report?
Well, we normally look at procedures as they affect financial statements. So if, for instance, you were giving keys to a safe to numerous people, that would be an issue that we would be looking at. If you were giving keys to someone to open a door to be able to use the park after hours, that may or may not be something we look at because it may or may not have a financial impact on the city as a whole.
Are procedures like that something though, that because of the potential for liability, that your company would normally be able to do?
We could look at it. It's generally not something we do look at because what we're looking at are whether your financial statements are fairly stated or not. And a potential liability from someone using a park wouldn't necessarily fall under that realm. What we'd be looking at more would be defalcations, basically people taking things from the city, taking assets from the city that didn't belong to them, overstatement of assets, understatement of liabilities, and proper statement of net assets. Those are what we're concerned with in our audit and those are the controls that we're looking at.
There's an area within our city and some procedures within our city that does handle property of value that I wonder if you do take a look at, and that's the property that is seized or confiscated by the police department. Do you look at that and do you look at the bookkeeping and the arrangements there?
Yeah, that's normally one of the areas that we do take a look at. And one of the things that we do look at is not only the control over the assets, but also whether those assets are available to the city. Because under that program, once a case has been adjudicated and the state's attorney makes the city aware that the case has been adjudicated and the seizure can then be perfected, those assets then become the assets of the city. And up until that point in time, they're not really the assets of the city because they may have to be returned at some point.
So in your audit of the city then this year, you did take a look at inventory control over that property and how that property is disposed of and the reports?
Yes.
And the reports that are necessary to be filed with the state?
Hmm, yeah, yeah.
And if you found no problems in those areas?
Not that I can recall, no. No material issues.
Hey, can you tell me how the valuable property is disposed of?
You're talking about specific assets?
I'm talking about property that's been seized, such as, let's say, jewelry recently recovered.
Right.
Okay, and how is that property disposed of?
Everything that's going to be disposed is signed, excuse me, is signed off by the police chief prior to anything being disposed. The city or the accounting finance department will not release or remove anything off their books until the information is, until a release is given to them, signed by the police chief. At that time, once it's signed by the police chief, that's when it's processed. Excuse me, and looking and comparing, one of the things we do is compare fiscal year to fiscal year to see movement in the account. Once we, if there is some movement, we look at an itemized list of transactions. We have a materiality level. We select certain transactions based on materiality. And then we backtrack to the authorization for that documentation being released. We look for signatures of the police chief, who is the designated person to approve a release of seized property. We also look back to any kind of court cases that were, or legal letters or documents stating what was the outcome of the court case.
Okay. So if property then was released because the court case was over or for whatever reason it was deemed no longer necessary to be held, then that property is disposed of in some way and?
Sometimes, yes, what happens is you generally have some kind of legal letter stating what was the disposition of the case. If the property was deemed to be returned back to the individual, still, you still will have a release from the police chief, signing the release of that property back to the individual. The individual is named on this release that the police chief signs.
I guess I could give you an example. You know, we used to have, the city used to auction cars often and we would periodically see the option of vehicles that had been either abandoned or seized. And no longer see those advertisements for auctions like that. And so I've been curious, you know, how the property was, you know, how those vehicles are disposed of at this point in time. And I thought maybe you could shed some light on that.
Well, generally, I, from, well, the last couple of years that I have been doing the audit, it's been mainly cash. So far, no property. I haven't seen any release of actual property. The property's been cash. So they haven't, I have not seen auction of cars unless the cars were disposed of and then you have the sign of the police chief. But I haven't, I have not been aware of any auction of cars. Most of the movement in the seized property account that has been documented on the city books has been cash that's been returned back to the individual.
There seems to be a gap in the, in the audit. I mean, there's a heck of a lot of cars towed out of the city any month. Those cars are going somewhere and they're not all returned to individuals.
Well, when you say towed out of the city.
I'm saying see cars that are either abandoned in the city or.
That may be a county.
Now, that may be a county issue. Now, that may be a county, that may be a county issue.
No, in the city, we have a, we have a tow service that takes them. We have, they have a property that they hold the cars on, and those cars used to be disposed of in the tombs of, you know, quite a few cars--
Mm-hmm.
Every couple of months, and that's, that's not happening. And I don't hear you giving me any confidence that, that those cars are--
Well, quite frankly, I did--
--being accounted for.
Quite frankly, I didn't come prepared to discuss disposal of cars this evening. I can certainly go back and take a look in our work papers and get back to you with some more information on that.
I'd really appreciate it.
Sure.
And that's not just vehicles. That was an example that I also--
No, I understand.
You know, there's other properties such as jewelry and, and gaming devices and things like that that are seized, and I would just like to make sure that they are properly accounted for and properly disposed of, and that the money that is returned to the city through any disposal is properly accounted for.
Okay. Well, we can look into that for you. I can say, I do recall years ago, one of the first years I was on this particular account, a Rolls Royce Corniche was seized and actually auctioned out on the steps of the, of the county center. So, yeah, I, I know exactly what you're talking about. I just have to go back and, and double check and take another look at the work papers to be able to, to answer your question more fully.
I really appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you.
No problem.
Good evening. Since most of the folks at home don't have access yet to this document, I wonder if you could just take a minute, looking at, at two issues. One is the financial reporting in general, and then also the, you know, relative health of our finances as measured by indices such as public debt to city income, for example. How, in the, in the phrase of New York's Mayor Koch, as he would say, how are we doing in those two areas?
Okay. Well, with regard, the, the best way to, to really analyze financial statements are your net assets. And net assets, first off, these statements are in two levels, okay? One is in a financial position level, that is, where are we today? And then another level is at the financial condition level, and that is not only where are we today, but where does it look like we're going to be down the road? From a financial condition standpoint, this, the best statement to look at is on page 21, which is the statement of net assets. And in that particular statement, the primary number to look at, to answer your question, would be unrestricted net assets, because those are net assets that at some point in time will turn into spendable assets. While you have $17.9 million worth of net assets, $12.2 million of that is basically bricks and mortar, things that you're not going to sell. This community, for instance. So that's not going to turn into cash, if you will, or an asset that can be utilized for appropriation. So really, the 4.2 million is, is what you'd be looking at. And with respect to, you know, to the city, that's about the best I've seen the city in, in a while. I mean, the city is, from that standpoint, it looks to be in, in pretty good shape, okay? The other, where are we today, is best depicted on page 23, which is the governmental fund statement. And on page 23, again, what we look at is we look at undesignated fund balance. But there, what we're looking at is we're looking at the undesignated fund balance in terms of your budget. How many months liquidity, if you will, do you have? How many months worth of fund balance do you have saved up in your budget? Or how much of your budget do you have saved up in your fund balance, so that if you hit a blip in the road, would you be able to, how would you be able to weather that storm? Your budgeted expenditures this year were 17 million. Your undesignated was 2.3 million. Doing the math on that, that's roughly about 15%, which is, again, a good place to be from that measurement standpoint. Generally, the bond rating agencies are looking at something around 8%, okay? Five to 8% they think is good. 15% is, is very good. There are some jurisdictions that get as high as 35 to 40%, and there are some jurisdictions that are much lower. So from that standpoint, the city appears to be in good shape. Now, as far as the statistical, and I really didn't come prepared to talk about the bonded debt per capita, but if you take a look at page 68, which is table number nine, it will give you the bonded debt per capita, which has gone down. It reached a high of about $400 in 2005 and is going down again. The city had been as low as $95 per capita at one point in time. Debt is one of those things that people are, you know, fear, but it can be a very, very useful tool, as Councilmember Ellis had pointed out earlier. While you went into debt to do some roadwork, you probably saved a lot of money in the long run. So just looking at debt by itself can be misleading as well. I don't know if that--
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, and they may be more for Ms. Brooks than for you, but one of them, I think, ties into something you were just going over. My questions are all in the supplemental stuff, starting at page 55. What I wanted to be sure that I understand is the variance in the final budget and how that plays out to the fund balance, because it looks like on pages 55, 6, and 7, that we, all, all the numbers were, the overall numbers were positive, which is good. We had more revenues or we had less expenditures, and we had, so we had an excessive revenues over expenditures of like 2.4 million. And, but then that, I'm assuming, goes to cover other things as we, as we look forward to going into the current fiscal year that we, that we carried over. So I wanted to just make sure that I understood how the, how the variance, the positive variance, whether that was more or less than we expected, and how that affected the carryover.
Well, actually, page 57, I think, is the page that you were looking at.
Right.
The city ended up the year with a deficiency of revenues of $4,500. However, you had budgeted to have a deficiency of 2.4 million, okay? So you actually did a lot better than you budgeted. Or another way of looking at it, you had planned on using $2.4 million worth of your fund balance, but you only used $4,500 of it.
Right.
So you can say that you ended the year much more positive than you had anticipated yourself.
And that's what I took from pages 55, 6, and 7, but then when I went over to page 62, then I wanted to make sure that I understood how that relates to the net change in fund balance at the bottom of that page, because it, that bounces around a fair amount, and for the, for the end of 2006, it should have a net change in fund balance of close to $300,000 in the negative. And I just, I want to make sure I understand. If, if I'm correct in assuming that those are related, how they relate? Page 62?
Yeah.
Okay. You looking for, looking for something that explains it?
Is it the modified accrual basis versus the annual basis?
Well, it's modified accrual basis versus the budgetary basis is the answer. But again, let me, I'll work up a reconciliation between the two numbers for you.
Okay. That, that would be helpful, just, I just want to make sure I understand.
Okay.
And, and the other, the other thing that I thought was interesting in all of these, and nobody has to answer this, this is not a question, this is just an observation, on page 73, the FTEs for the last 10 years, and, and when you look at where we were in '97 and where we are now, we were at 139 full-time equivalents, and now we're at 135. I know that part of that had to do with not having as many code enforcement officers when they, when, when we changed that to the county. But for anybody who's thinking that the Tacoma Park city government is growing, our main, our main expenditure is salaries and benefits, and the full-time equivalents have gone down, so that the increases in funds over 10 years that we've taken in have mainly dealt with either capital or inflation. It isn't that we've got a growing bureaucracy. And I, and I think that's an important trend to know.
Councilmember Williams? I just was looking at something on the previous question you had, page 62. If you take a look at that, that is all of the governmental funds taken together.
All of the funds together.
Right. That's not just the general fund, which would be where your budget is--
Okay.
But it also includes your community center funds, special revenue, and non-major funds. And if you look at page 25, that's, those two numbers, or those two pages are comparable. So when you're looking at 62, that's all governmental activities, not just the general fund. When you're looking at the budget, the budget is specifically the general fund only.
Okay.
Okay.
Good. Thank you. And the, and the final observation, and I know I've had this observation, oh, I had one other question, with, on page 75, where you look at the, basically, the population by age group, it's very interesting to note the trend over the last 30-plus years that a number of age groups changed a little bit, but the big change is the 25 to 44 age group in the city where that age group has doubled. And that really explains a lot of, a lot of things in terms of what's important to people in the city.
Say what page I was going to--
75. It's basically people who are at the age to be parents. And that should indicate that the numbers of children maybe in the, in the next census will show a continued, or a renewed upward trend since they were generally going to be banned. Yes, I know.
Well, look, look at the drop in everyone over 45, which proves that the boomers are not inside taking what they're due.
Right.
Contrary to popular--
If I can just back up for a second, the question that I had, and I have it many times, and I just wanted to check on any progress we're making, is on the personal property taxes, business, I think it's page 50, if you want to go a circle. Utility and personal property taxes, and I know that the, the 2006 fiscal year, 490 was less than we expected, and I know that we had some troubles for a while with the county collecting those, and I always just have the sense that we're not quite on top of that in terms of making sure that we get, get what's due, and I didn't know if anybody had any observations on how those collections are.
Actually, as a follow-up to prior years, there was a management letter, I think, comment last year about the collection efforts. So we do, we completed a prior, a follow-up on those issues. And actually, with respects to the personal property taxes, as well as your stormwater and your licensing refuge, the finance department has made tremendous strides. They have established procedures for collecting these debts. They, last year, I think it was one taxpayer in particular for, I think it was licensing refuge, stormwater, that his one balance was probably maybe 60% of the balance, and they were able to collect that during fiscal year 06. Currently, as, as the finance department is working on trying to refine that collection process, they're also looking at just some of the efforts that they are taking to make sure that is a value added and, as well as allow, that the citizens know that the city does need, will, do need their money and, and would like payment for services that are rendered. But the finance department has, has, has improved greatly over the past fiscal year.
Great.
Yeah.
I just had one follow-up question on that, the stormwater fees. Did you mention that was a management note last year?
Yes.
And one of the things that's troubled me through these years, we've talked about the stormwater fee, is why that it wasn't a management note until last year, if those things have been outstanding for so long?
Actually, it was a management note a couple of years ago. It had, it wasn't, we didn't, it might not have said stormwater particularly, but it was a collection effort of the city. Has been a previous management note that was made.
Okay.
Yeah.
I feel better.
No, it's, it's, it's a comment that's come up time and time again, and the comment comes up, and things are done to help relieve the situation, progress is made, and it goes on, then every couple of years, it, it seems to pop up again with changes in, you know, city managers, as well as treasurers and--
Yeah, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Ms. Brooks for the great progress we've made in that area this year. I think a lot of work was put in, and acknowledge that and appreciate it.
And, and maybe I'll take this opportunity to put in another plug for my thought that we should consider at some point publishing lists of people who owe big sums. It's public information, and it might help to collect it.
You should also thank the city manager, because she's spent a lot of time in working with the finance department to improve our collection efforts.
I do, I do thank--
And she's come up with some very creative ways of, of trying to get people to--
I do thank you, Barb, and, and I know also that every time I thank her, she always says, "Well, thank you," Ms. Brooks.
I would just mention, since we're talking about the stormwater collections, as Ms. Brooks and I do have a meeting later this week to sort of revisit the issue with the county about possibly putting the city's various fees on the county property tax bills. They have been reluctant to do so in the past, I think just because of how it impacts their workload. They've agreed to meet with us to talk about that further. I would share with the council that we do have sort of a certain core of the community that, for whatever reason, seems resistant to, you know, paying their bills. It is a relatively small fee that we charge for all of these items, and I think one of the things, if the county isn't amenable to putting on the property tax bill, is you will start seeing us sort of shorten the cycle in terms of how we're doing things, because if you just think about what will now be a $48 charge, it doesn't take a whole lot before you start racking up more expense in terms of trying to collect it than it's actually worth. So I think what we've sort of learned, Ms. Brooks and I, as well as her staff, in going through this, is that you need to kind of send a second notice at 30 days, and truthfully, as harsh as it may sound, move fairly quickly to advising people that their property can be put up for sale. It's certainly not something that we want to do, but I think we have found that in the absence of, at least mentioning that that's a possibility, sometimes people don't follow through.
I think it's interesting that people-- I think it's interesting that people use that as a way of making a statement of their frustration of one, one thing or another about the city, and for some reason, they target the stormwater fees as the way of doing it.
Yeah, I think one of the things we're going to do this year, certainly the amount is changing, as the council may recall, for oh-seven. I think there has been some confusion, at least in the past, in terms of that's not part of your property tax bill. And I think for some individuals, it's just been legitimately, you know, misinformation about how that's collected. What we're going to do this year is before the bills go out, is we will do an article in the newsletter, as well as probably send the council some information that maybe you could share on your various listserv, highlighting why the fee is changing, and also just denoting that it is not part of the property tax bill, and it's the responsibility of each property owner to remit that directly to the city. So hopefully, some of that may help alleviate some of the problems we've experienced in the past.
Maybe we could figure out if someone's not paying their stormwater fee, we could figure out a way to return to them their stormwater.
Mr. Novak, did you want to go over the management comments?
Yeah, we have one other thing that we need to go over, and I'm going to let Eris Coleman, who is manager on the job, go over this part. As I say every year, there are a lot of things that you do right. We're not allowed to write down what you do right. Well, you're allowed to write down what you don't do right, or what you could improve upon. Our comments are strictly constructive in nature, and there to point out areas where the city can improve. And with that, we had two areas this year, and I'll let Eris go over those with you.
Excuse me. Kind, to reiterate what Mr. Novak said earlier, two years ago, I became manager for the financial audit for the city of Tacoma Park, and the, over the last two years, the management comments that have made the letter since, I think, two thousand and four, have been more of a constructive nature, something that I, I think you're able to, the finance department, both the city manager, are able to take that to build upon and make changes even beyond some of our recommendations. In saying that, one of the two items we had today is kind of the Art Just Pet Fee, the segregation of duties in the recreation department. As we know, while the community center was being built, a lot of departments were housed in different places. Recreation was housed in a trailer that is no longer out in the parking lot. And the director of recreation, in a way of trying to keep the customer from having to go in and out of the building, sometimes in bad weather, had, had started, started to collect the program fees herself, me and herself and her staff. The problem with that was that it's only two main persons who are involved in that process. And one person, as she's doing the registration, where a customer comes in and wants to take a class or an activity, this person's doing the registration, as well as this person is accepting the fee for the particular program. And saying that probably maybe eighty percent or more of the fees were in checks, which is caused for less risk than cash. Each day, the particular individual would do, would register the, the customer into the program with, using the registration program that the city has established. They would print out the cash that was received, or payments that were received, were, were accompanied, accompanied this printout. The concern we, we have, or the concern we noted, is that sometimes the director or the other person in the department would be, would be there to be able to compare what was registered, the fees that were charged, and what was collected. Well, because the, the other individual was director, she had other obligations, and sometimes she was not there to perform this verification. And therefore, you had one person doing the registration, collecting payment, and then also remitting the payment to the finance department, where a second check was done in the finance department, but still you had one person having total control of the process. This was an area that, just through our normal question-answer session we do during the year with various department heads and staff members, it was, we identified this particular risk and discussed this with the parts of the director, as well as the city manager and the director of finance. Excuse me. In doing that, the city has prepared a response to our concerns, as well as our recommendation, which is noted on the management letter. And since then, since we have brought this issue up, the city, as well as director of program of recreation, has instituted additional procedures to ensure that there is another independent verification of registrants, as well as the payments that are going to accompany the, the registration for that day. Excuse me. And that's, yes.
Could I just clarify in terms of your, your comments? When you looked at this, did you uncover any evidence that money had been improperly accounted for? Or is this more in the nature of a concern that this could lead to a problem in the future?
Yes, correct. What we do is part of our audit and planning, we call their SAS ninety-nine, call them fraud questions, it's just the name. And we ask a series of questions, and just, we kind of get out of the box of the normal audit questions. And in, in doing this, we learned of this concern that cash is being collected outside of the finance department by a, the, the part, by the recreation department. From there, that led us to speak to the recreation director, from there, we spoke to the individual who does the registration. We looked at, we did, thank you, thank you very much. From that point, we have had reports and trans, cash transactions, can match them up with various registrants, as well as the payments, and we did not find any evidence of any fraudulent activity or misappropriation of funds. It's just, it's just, it's in a management as a concern, because going forward and left unchecked, as auditors always say, fraud is generally committed because you have the opportunity.
I appreciate that clarification, thank you. Terry?
Thank you. I really appreciate you looking at this issue, because it is something that, that has come up in the past. And I just wonder, you mentioned the collection of the fees here at the recreation department, but we also have a facility over on New Hampshire Avenue, and historically, we have had a problem. Prior to Ms. Matthews coming with the city, there was a problem with registration fees at the New Hampshire Rec facility, and I just wondered if that is encompassed in these safeguards that are implemented here?
Yes. Excuse me.
Thank you.
Thank you. The second, I'm sorry.
I think there's one more question.
Before I came here, I worked in a city in a recreation department that shall remain nameless, where they had exactly that problem, and there were, there were tens of thousands of dollars in safes and bank accounts related to various divisions of the recreation department, which ultimately led to the termination and newspaper headlines of several staff members. And I would agree that it was kind of a crime of, of opportunity. And I observed this going on when I first got there, I can probably tell you at least twenty different ways to cheat the system. But one of the fixes that came out of this was that they went to online registration. And I've had a lot of people ask me about online registration for the recreation department. It's, it's, it's convenient for people, you register with a credit card, and people can still come in person. And usually what, what happened, at least in the instance of this city, was the person behind the desk would take the cash or the, or the check and do the registration, and give them a, a printout from the system. And, and that pretty much stops all of that, because the money doesn't go into the safe in the floor under the administrative assistance desk, but instead goes, goes right into the, to the bank account for the, for the city. And I was wondering if there's any possibility of, of pursuing online registration either. I imagine our own system would probably be pretty expensive, but I wonder if we could catch a ride on another city or county's registration system.
Well, actually, I do believe it is something I take because of the cost that I guess the city would definitely have to take into consideration.
One thing, when you're looking at these comments, you have to take a look at the cost and the benefit. If the cost outweighs the benefit of doing something, then it's not necessarily the best thing to do. While online registration would help to resolve the issue, it would resolve the issue for those individuals who could use credit card, for instance. However, for those individuals who either couldn't or chose not to, you would have to have another avenue for them to register, which would lead us right back to where we are right now. So while it probably would be helpful in curtailing most, most, you would still have a certain, at least in our, our experience, there would be a certain level of individual that would still want to, you know, come up and, you know, register in person and pay in person. So it would be back to the same issue.
Are there any other questions?
And the last item that we have deals with the rehabilitation loans that the city issued many years ago. With these loans, the city has two sets. One set of the loans were issued for individuals who wanted to do rehabilitation to their house. They were federally backed loans, and the individual would not, had the choice of not paying the loan, but the deed, the loan was recorded on the deed of the individual's home. So if the home was ever sold, the city would collect their money. Then you have the, another set, which were being repaid and have been repaid on time. I think right now, the outstanding balance as of oh-six was maybe thirty-something thousand dollars that was due for those loans that had to be repaid. Other ones that, ones that we're speaking about here are the ones that we call deferred. They did not have to be repaid. The city, the loan was, was supposed to be recorded on the individual's deed, therefore, the city would recoup their money if, if and when the home was, was sold. When, and looking at these loans, they were issued more than twenty years ago. And over thirty years periodically, as, since we have been auditors, we will look at the loan files to make sure, one, that you, the loan paper, the paperwork was still, was intact, it was adequate. The, we had proof of the deed being recorded on to the owner's deed. And due to the low risk of these loans, every year, we may not, we may not select them to actually pull the files. We may do this analytically, just make sure nothing's changed, if something's changed, we may, we will look further into that. Well, this year was one of the years where we opted to actually pull files. And in pulling the files, we noted the issues that we had here, where one loan file, the loan, I think, was fifteen hundred dollars. We could not locate the loan file, no, I'm sorry, that was, that was, it's the other one, I'm sorry. The one that, the loan file we could not locate was, I think, forty-two thousand dollars. However, the individual, we sent confirmations out to the receivable. The individual did sign the confirmation stating that the money was due to the city. The problem is, the only concern with that is that you do, you do not have proof of recorded deed. So I can sign a letter saying, "Oh, until you try to collect it," that's the concern there. The second item was, we were able to find paperwork of the loan agreement. The problem, so I know, however, we could not find proof of the deed being recorded on the individual's homeowner's deed, and that loan there was, I think, fifteen hundred dollars. So in going forward, we, in, in talking, playing this matter to Yvonda Brooks, there was a, a bag that allowed the adjustment expense placed to the, for the rehabilitation loans for fiscal year oh-six, with additional research and just review of the outstanding loans to determine collectability of the loans going forward, to see if any additional allowance or bad debt expense needs to be recorded in fiscal year oh-seven and going forward. Excuse me.
So this is, this is a record, a record-keeping issue?
Yes, and.
Chances, chances are, since we had looked at these in the past, and we had found documents in place, with all the movement of documents and things of that nature that's occurred in the past couple of years, with the construction going on here in the community center, excuse me. It's, yeah, it's very possible that, you know, that a file's been misplaced. So, you know, the fact that the individual has indicated that they are aware they owe the money is a good sign. Basically, I think what, what needs to be done is, is take a look into the deed to see that in fact, a loan is still recorded on that, on that individual's deed. And I think if you have documentation of that, you'll be in good shape. But then, I'm not a lawyer, so, I mean legally, but.
Does this suggest to you that there may be other collectibles lying out there in the files, and that maybe it would be a good idea to do some additional pulling, just for our own?
We pulled all the files, okay. And these were the only two exceptions that we found when we pulled the files. It's probably not a bad idea every once in a while to pull the files to make sure. Also, it probably wouldn't be a bad idea to contact the counties to make sure they're aware of these loans in existence, that if the properties are conveyed, they make sure that it doesn't slip through the cracks.
Okay.
Do you want to add something?
No, I just wanted to, if we're wrapping up, did you have anything else, Mr. Van Bakker? Before we ended, I just wanted to thank everyone at Cliff and Dennis, and particularly Mr. Novak and Ms. Coleman for all their assistance, and certainly Ms. Brooks and her staff. It's a true pleasure to be sitting up here tonight and have a vastly different situation than I guess I inherited when I first started, and I certainly think the vast majority of the credit goes to Ms. Brooks and the excellent work that she's done, as well as that of her staff.
It is a much better feeling.
And I, I do want to echo that, and thank you for the work you do. And also thank, also the city manager and the finance director for doing, and their staff for doing an excellent job. And we very much appreciate it, and I think it's really made a noticeable difference. Thank you all.
One, I'm sorry, I know we're trying to wrap this up, and the only thing I want to make sure of is that as we go forward, I know you've been the firm that we've used for our audits for several years now. Are there things on an ongoing basis that you do to maintain your independence of the city? Reporting any conflicts of interest, you know, do you do forms or something annually?
Well, we don't do forms annually, however, we are bound by both generally accepted audit standards and governmental auditing standards to ensure that we maintain our independence by not getting involved in any transactions with the city, by not discussing matters with management prior to our retention as auditors. And basically maintaining a independence, not only in fact, but also in appearance as well. Basically, the only time you see us in the city is at audit time. The rest of the time, we basically don't get involved in any way, shape, or form with the city.
Good, and so really, it boils down to you get paid for contracted services, regardless of whether you find problems or not?
That's correct.
And your credibility as a firm is based on you finding problems when they exist?
That's correct.
Well, thank you, I, I also appreciate the work, and I, since you've been with, you know, the city, the firm that we've retained for several years, it's, it's great if that can continue, but I do think that independence is critical, and I'm glad that you're well aware of how to maintain that.
Are there any other questions?
Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
The council's going to take a very short break, and then back to the final announcement.
Okay, you are going to give us an update. I believe the last time we talked to you, you had a number of things underway but not completed. And I assume that you're going to talk to us about a number of things that have been completed since then.
Yes, I'm Stacy Baker, and I'm the co-chair of the Emergency Preparedness Committee. The other co-chair is Deputy City Manager Wayne Hobbs, who's also here tonight and who's reviewed the report that I'm going to give you. I would like to begin with an update on progress on the recommendations that we had provided from our committee the last time that I was here in April. And I circulated a one-page report that goes with my report tonight and a one-page attachment where you can see our work plan from the past six months and where we are on all of those items for additional detail. When I was here in April, we had completed a major task, which was to review as a committee, which is comprised of staff and citizens from Tacoma Park and representatives of Montgomery County. We had completed a review of the city's emergency operations plan. And at that time, we had recommended that it is adequate, but it certainly needed major improvements. It was written before September 11th of 2001. A lot had changed, the understanding of the role of the city relative to the county. Incident command structures were not in place at that time. So there were many opportunities for that plan to be strengthened. So our first recommendation was that the city plan be updated. And since then, the staff have completed a schedule that is feasible to both update the plan and ensure that staff are trained in the National Incident Management System, which would enable them to carry out emergency functions in the, under the authority of the county, to transfer authority in emergencies to the county, et cetera. So that's a very positive thing, that there is now a plan underway to update that plan. And the staff had reported that the expertise from the committee and the process of focusing on it was very helpful in that regard. We have formed subcommittees to focus on some of the more problematic areas of the plan. The first one that we have folks working on is the issue of how to communicate between the city and the residents in the event of an emergency where people are not signed up for Alert Tacoma, they can't receive a message from email or on their cellphone, and they may not be listening to radio or mass media. How do we get word to them? Originally in the plan, there were three major elements, all of which had flaw. One was to rely on public safety contacts as a neighbor-to-neighbor kind of communication of involving civilians. Another was to use kiosks around the city, which was an untested and unpromoted mechanism of getting the word out by notices, you know, possibly worthwhile, but not ready to function at the time we reviewed the plan. And then the third was having police have loudspeakers on their cars going around, which can be a problem because those vehicles may be needed for other purposes in an emergency. So realizing that it was complex, that is an example of one thing where we formed a subcommittee to really work with public safety. So Acting Chief Corsi has been involved, members of our committee, city staff, in looking at, you know, what would be more appropriate and feasible ways to go forward. And we're going to be looking at that and voting on some recommendations this week. So I don't have those for you, but I wanted to give you an example of a way that our committee has been involved in updating the plan. The second recommendation that we had was that, given that the plan called for a whole lot of community outreach and communications and things that didn't really fit with staff day-to-day responsibility, that either the expectations of the city's preparedness roles needed to be reduced or personnel assignments needed to be shifted or increased to somehow make an alignment between what's in the plan and what can be done. August 1st, there was opportunity that city staff saw to shift some assignments. So there's a half-full-time equivalent person, Anita George, who is now assigned to help coordinate some of the city preparedness efforts. So that is a major milestone that our committee wanted to bring to your attention that increases the capacity of the staff that work for the city to carry out preparedness responsibilities. We also recommended that the council might choose to set a deadline for staff to be trained on the National Incident Management System, as well as assuring that the plans conform to NIM. So we're working on the plan, or the city is working on the plan being updated. But they've made very good progress on their target, which was October 1, which we still thought was very aggressive, as a target date for 100% of staff participating in two different trainings that are offered free by FEMA. And so you can see on this sheet that, you know, at least 76% have completed these courses. So not hitting the target date, but, you know, very impressive progress and well underway. Similarly, staff recommended that the Emergency Preparedness Committee, if we were to make such recommendations, that we should also have such training. So we set a target that all of our committee members would submit certificates of completions of these courses by the end of November. So that we will measure at the end of this week, I guess, to see how we've met on that. Lastly, and this is probably what everyone always recommends to council, that ensuring appropriate resources for preparedness. And since your approval of a budget that included $20,000 for supplies, although those supplies have not yet been procured, that also really helps to increase the city's capacity to purchase what's needed in order to fulfill an obligation to shelter staff, to shelter recreation patrons, to shelter any, any kind of patron that might be in a city building. So those are meant for, as I understand it, pots, food, water, those kinds of supplies. And so the staff have been queried by Deputy City Manager for other supplies needs that they might have in addition. So those are some updates on our past recommendations. Our committee has talked at a few points about what else we would like to update you on. And so in no particular order, I have these listed. We're very pleased that we have been able to turn our attention to some outreach and that we made 100% of the fall, of the summer and fall festivals in having a booth, thanks to Montgomery County. So we saw a role as not doing that independently, but coordinating with Montgomery County, who already have materials, giveaways, all of the, you know, county, state, and federal materials that you could want on emergency preparedness. They brought all of the tables that we needed. The fire department participated. So those were very well-received outreach opportunities where people were glad to see that there was a Tacoma Park emergency preparedness focus. And we estimate, or the county estimates through their materials based on formula distribution, that we reached about 1,250 people. Not all of which we can guarantee are Tacoma Park residents, but nonetheless, a good outreach event. We also coordinated with the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee that paid for the printing, I understand, for the preparedness fire, the bilingual, English and Spanish, preparedness fire that went out with the newsletter. So that was a positive outreach activity. On pandemic or avian influenza preparedness, we've recommended that those planning activities get bumped up in the list for supplies acquisition and for other preparedness activities for the city. And I've itemized here several of the things that have happened, that have been reported through our committee as we've tried to keep tabs on the progress here. The city workers have received their flu shots, contracted at the Washington Adventist Hospital. There was to be a joint presentation from the County Health Department on pandemic flu and government response planning to the committee and the staff. However, because of scheduling conflicts, we couldn't get one on the dates that the committee is scheduled to meet. But the staff are going to be receiving a presentation in December on their roles and response in pandemic flu. And we will try to... And we will try to also schedule some programming for the committee, so we can stay on top of that issue. The committee itself has facilitated some additional communication coordination around pandemic flu planning. For example, discussion of what are the recommendations for public safety, having the appropriate masks, their fit testing. And so some of the connections that occur within the committee itself have sped up some of that arrangement happening. The next county exercise, so for most exercising Tacoma Park is participating under the organization of the county, the next one in December is on pandemic flu. So there's some things happening that are helpful in pandemic flu preparedness. Our most important concern in the city is that the city is an employer, first. Secondly, the city provides services that are very important, protecting the safety and the health of residents. So if 30 to 50% of the workforce doesn't show up, how does trash get collected? How do police do their job to protect public safety? And then the third role is in support of other jurisdictions, who may need to call on city staff, public safety, personnel, to support efforts that they need. So this is still a really important issue. It may be out of some of the headlines, but it hasn't gone away. Alert Tacoma caught your attention that, from what Acting Chief Corsi knows, our registration is on par with other jurisdictions, but it's still very low. So you can see here that we're under 400 people, and in a community of our size, the promise of using a system like this for broad alerting is not something that we have achieved yet. So I'm hoping, as our committee looks to our deliverable list for the next six months, that this may be on it, in finding some ways to really maximize the potential of this system, which is a good part of our infrastructure. I understand that through the Council of Governments, our region will get the reverse 911 service by the end of the year. If that indeed happens, that is one of the most major advances in our ability to communicate with residents, large numbers of people rapidly in an emergency with a message, with information about what to do, where to tune in, provided that phone lines are working. So again, for the next report, I hope that we can say more about that, because that will impact plans for the city. How would Tacoma Park avail itself of using that type of service? I certainly don't know the answers to that, but that's something that I think our committee will look into as that becomes available. Some council members had also asked about exercises, so I wanted to point out that we did experience one missed opportunity this summer, in which our city missed the opportunity to participate in a Montgomery County exercise about a train derailment, which is an issue that's a particular concern here in Tacoma Park because of a communication problem. But now that's sorted out, that they know the right people to tell, from what I understand. And incoming staff plan to participate in 100% of the county-led exercises. And that our current schedule, the current schedule for modifying the plan calls for exercising the revised city plans after they are changed. It doesn't make sense to exercise a part of a plan that you don't think is going to work. We had previously, before my last report, made as a committee some recommendations for the change in the purpose for the committee, some language changes, things such as where it said that we would establish relations with the county, to change it that we thought it would be better stated, that we would advise the city on ways to more effectively relate to the county, that we were a committee, not a government-to-government relation entity, things that, like instead of promoting or offering search training for people that want to be part of the Community Emergency Response Team, that we would coordinate with the county for that, because they do that, things like that. And it just slips through the cracks in getting to you, so we'll make sure that the council get the suggested changes for your consideration.
Well, the timing on that is actually very good, because we are now going through a process of talking to a number of committees, and we will be making changes in some of the committee's statutory charter. So your timing is fine.
Good. That's one for the team. That slipping through the cracks didn't cause a problem, that was good timing. Some of our challenges, we have suffered some losses of membership, which is not uncommon to committees, I'm sure. We have, I believe, three vacancies now, and we really need people that represent the racial and ethnic diversity of our community. We need people that represent different wards. And we really care very much that we have people that represent apartment dwellers, and not just people who are homeowners or live in single-family homes. So those are some of the things that are really important to our committee, as we think about the preparedness needs of the city. And the second challenge that I would note for you is always the case, of competing staff priorities. We're getting a little bit behind schedule, I fear, for updating the emergency operations plan. We probably won't make a draft by December 1 to the committee, and the committee comments were going to be due in February. But I think we can still pull it out, and Wayne Hobbs is confident that we can still get this done by the April 2007 deadline. Very excellent relationships between the staff and the resident members of the committee, and we'll work together to keep this moving ahead, rather than let it slide, because it's too important. A few other items that I want to thank council members Siemens and Austin Lane for providing some questions in advance. So there are a few other items that I wanted to address because of their questions. One question is about the role of the neighborhood safety contacts and their role in communicating. And I'd mentioned earlier that our subcommittee was reviewing the non-electronic communications plan. However, we've also asked our representative Buddy Daniels from the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee to please report to us at the end of this six-month work period, what is the coverage of public safety contacts in Tacoma Park who have an acknowledged emergency communications role? They've agreed to it, and we could call them up tomorrow if needed. And there is no roster of contacts who have an agreed role, who've been trained to do something, and who are engaged in any system that we could use. And even if there were, there are concerns about any civilians, their safety, and delivering a consistent message. So I expect later this week that our committee will recommend removing public safety contacts, after they've been in the plan for five years. Removing them because the system currently doesn't exist, to mobilize them for a productive purpose.
And that's kind of being replaced with the CERT program?
Yes, kind of being replaced with that. So the Montgomery County coordinates CERTs. So if we had an emergency in Tacoma Park that is so large that even the sizable Montgomery County professional staff is not enough to come to aid and get the word out to residents or whatever is needed, they have an additional asset, which is to mobilize this trained corps, or somewhat trained, I'm one of them, we're not that well-trained. But a trained corps volunteers, the CERTs. And so we have that as an asset, that we could request Montgomery County to call them up and play that kind of paraprofessional emergency responder role. To increase the chance that we will have more CERTs that are quickly able to respond on the scene in Tacoma Park, we focused on promoting CERT. Our goal this past six months was to double our CERTs from four to eight, and we're at 10. As a result of some really hard promotion, including Buddy Daniels and getting the word out about it, we were able to also locate a CERT training in November here at the Community Center. So we're making some progress in that regard, as a citizen replacement. But there may still be other uses in the future for citizens and emergency circumstances, but at this time, we don't want anything in the plan, I certainly don't want anything in the plan, that is not ready to be mobilized.
Can I ask about that CERT training?
Yes.
Is it something that you have, and probably the Neighborhood Safety Contacts list was one where you saw those people as likely to register for CERT?
Yes.
And so you've done the recruiting from that list? I just want to make sure that if those folks who, I did a fair amount of recruiting in my early days on the city council, to get more of those from Ward 1, and they really did want the training, and they wanted to know what their role was, and a lot of that was unclear, so I'm glad there's more structure to it now that they can plug into. And I hope that you'll generate interest by having 10 people. See if those 10 people can find two people each that will sign up. That's a step in the right direction, to keep doubling that every year. I appreciate that you have these deliverables. It's very concrete, and gives us an idea of what you're using to measure your progress and what you're aiming for, and I like it a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I wish that we could do better on having a performance dashboard with more measurables about preparedness. But as I shared with you previously, it's indicative of the entire emergency preparedness field, in my experience, that there aren't a lot of measures that, I ask people, what are the benchmarks? What should we be hoping to achieve for a registration for a system like Alert Tacoma? What should we be able to achieve for home preparedness? And it's tough to provide measures. For example, for home preparedness, the Council of Governments has a regional target for our area of 50% of homes will have an emergency preparedness kit. And they invest in telephone surveys. And we know we're at 40%, but we can't single out Tacoma Park. Even that would require an investment in oversampling, that is not really realistic for us. So it's hard to know, how are we doing as a result for outreach for a community like Tacoma Park? So if you have additional measures that you'd like to see, that helps you govern, to know how are we doing on preparedness, I mean, I'd like to try to deliver on them for you. So please let us know.
Go ahead. I want to know when I get my bullhorn, my radio, and my orange vest.
Can I take a CERT training?
I did 60 days at FEMA, I think that's worth something. I have a couple questions. Do we have a website on emergency preparedness in the city that's easy to access, and that provides people with the information like what they should have in their house and in their car?
To my knowledge, the city website points to other websites with that information. One of the things that's really important, not just from an economizing of resources standpoint, but is to not add to confusion. And so it would not be to benefit, in our estimation, for the city to do additional work in creating its own website. We think referring to the county that already has a website that includes resources from FEMA and other reputable sources is the way to go.
I think one of the things that keeps people from signing up for the Alert Tacoma is that they don't want to sign up to yet another message board, where someone's going to accidentally send them a notice about their kid's latest fundraising project, or that kind of thing. And I think one of the things that would be helpful, maybe, would be to do a little bit of outreach on our existing heavily-used websites around the city, because we have a lot of lists that are around the city. I'm on like six of them. And I know that there's three more at least that I'm not on in Joy's Ward, and there's a lot of overlap, but there's quite a few websites. And there are a few people who've actually been talking about Alert Tacoma, and what it is and what it isn't recently, because there's some issue around the police radio But there's been some conversation about it, and people clearly don't really know what it is or what it can do, because we talked about whether or not we could use it to notify people about the change in the traffic schedule. I mean, so there's kind of, there's not really, I think, a great understanding of even the people who I would say are your superpower users of internet listservs. So a little more outreach, maybe, around that would help, and I could help you identify who those are, if you could make a list. I think probably most, between most of the people in the council, we're probably connected into almost every listserv that there is. And the other thing is that...
Thank you.
Sure. Before you even mentioned that some of the other council members talked about community contacts, I was thinking, wow, neighborhood block captains. And then you went on to express why you wouldn't include them in the plan. My field of expertise is actually community development and community building, and building community at the block level is one of the, I think, most important things that you can do to get people involved in what's going on. So I would argue that we should retain our connection with the public safety contacts, and even if you don't use them in your plan that you put together, as if they were some critical underpinning of the whole process, those folks have a lot of really useful information. And one example would be, we had block captains across the city, they might know where the homebound disabled folks are, that are on their specific street. When I was a kid, I had a brother that had cerebral palsy, and we had a sticker, one of those big handicap signs, right on our door, and then on his window, so the fireman knew, like, there's a handicap person here, and then if they were on the outside, they could find it at the window, which is a good thing. I don't see those anymore, but I know the lady who lives across the street from me is in a wheelchair, and she has a ramp, and she couldn't get out of her house if there was a gas emergency or something like that. And I hear from the people in Long Branch Ligo, I watch them on the listserv, and how they're watching out, well, this person, have you connected up with this person who has this particular issue? And I think that's kind of the critical thing, is they know all of the little details. And so it would be good to know, as an emergency responder, if you just had a list of people and their addresses that you could maybe go to in a community, if you had specific questions about something that was happening in that area, even if it wasn't who you were relying on to stand at the corner with the bullhorn and the orange vest.
So I take away from what you're suggesting, that we should be mindful of there are formal channels, and then there are informal channels, that we should seek to strengthen. And certainly, your points about people in the neighborhood, people who are patrollers, people who are involved in public safety contacts, who have other types of community responsibilities, they can be on the front lines of making sure that certain neighbors that have special needs are attended to.
That's one of the suggestions, of the many suggestions that are going to come out of this meeting on Thursday. And you're echoing exactly what a rescue fireman who was teaching the last CERT, since I coordinated the last CERT class, I went through it again, I really enjoyed it. And one of his comments was, when rescue gets into a neighborhood after a catastrophe of some kind, we used a tornado, if we really need people to come to our assistance, to identify the houses, to identify where there may be citizens with certain problems, because that neighborhood may have drastically changed in a worst-case scenario, I thought, wow, what place to use safety contacts? It's just a possibility. We will be throwing out some ideas on Thursday, and even some of the other meetings, and seeing what the committee proposes. I, for one, am very much in favor of what you've just suggested. So we'll see how that goes. But that's going to be one of my proposals, one of the committee's proposals for the safety contacts, to be, and they are familiar with the neighborhood, and in an emergency situation, once help has arrived, assist the rescuers in rescuing and assisting people who may be in trouble. Hopefully, we never have to be in that situation, but I want a plan for the worst-case scenario.
So if I'm understanding your suggestion, your suggestion is that we maintain our system of public safety contacts, but that we not necessarily rely on them as a primary means of communication because of the gaps that you mentioned. But it sounds, Buddy, from what you're saying, that we are going to try and continue to use them for public information and other kinds of purposes. And presumably, if we could build a more comprehensive... And presumably, if we could build a more comprehensive system, then they might be useful for the purposes that you were talking about, Stacy, right?
Possibly. So, I mean, I think that we just need to have a line-
You're talking about being real estate.
-between what is the formal use and what are informal channels. Certainly, you know, we did a presentation of the public safety contacts about you can become involved in CERT, you, because you are involved in public safety and are concerned, can be a source of information and inspiration to your neighbors to get their emergency kits. You know, so there can be the cheerleading for the informally and trying to work those networks. And then there comes to be, there's the city responsibility to respond in a certain way under chain of command, you know, with the county. And I don't feel that the public safety contacts can be part of that.
I appreciate that assessment. I do.
Coming back to the cheerleading comment and the thing that I said about the community development and community building, is I think that they're critical in the preparedness portion of it and not necessarily in the response portion.
Yes. That's the way, right. Thank you for articulating it that way.
Well, it didn't occur to me until you said the cheerleading thing, but that's what it is.
And I don't mean no demeanour by saying cheerleading.
No, I didn't think so.
Community building, cheerleading. I think you're talking about the same thing.
Yeah, no, that's-
I think you are.
Yeah, but that's exactly what it is. Those are the folks who are doing the community building portions of it and can help you with the preparedness message, can help you get people to sign on to the listserv. But I think that's where they're critical. And I can guarantee that if we don't have them, or if we take, if we take all roles away from them because we don't have a formal, official role for them, that we will diminish our capacity to do that portion of the preparedness that they do so well. And it'll have a negative impact on, I think, the other kinds of community building things that they do that are adjacent to the emergency preparedness activities.
So wrap up.
Well, you're echoing exactly what we're going to be proposing, just proposed to the committee on Thursday. And keep in mind that the public safety contacts are very much still, whatever happens, a liaison between the community and certainly our police department. That's where they were developed to begin with. So, I mean, there's, we'll be defining, we'll discuss it on Thursday, and like I said, you are echoing exactly what the Non-Electronic Communications Committee may very well be proposing. We're still talking about it before we propose it, but I'm in agreement, full agreement with what you've just said, so.
Thank you. That's okay. Just the take-home message is that we're still operating under a plan that needs improvement. There's a plan in place to improve the city's emergency preparedness plan. There are increased resources in terms of human capacity, being well-trained, having a half FTE that helps the city be better prepared than we were six months ago when I was here. There's also an increased level of priority and commitment that we as citizen members attack through the staff, that this is a really important area to be working on for the city's preparedness. And lastly, there's a much improved relationship, I believe, from six months ago with the county and cooperation in delivering the outreach and clarifying roles. It continues to be a very productive relationship. We would welcome very much your feedback on how is this committee doing for your performance expectations? What are the things that you would like to see us work on for the next six months as we prepare our set of deliverables for January through June? And how can we better, you know, carry out work on your behalf and work with you?
Well, I want to say that I very much appreciate this report, and I very much appreciate not only the expertise that you and your committee obviously have, but your great organizational ability. That helps with a very large task like this. Actually, you covered everything that I had on my list of questions. I have one more that actually is probably more addressed to the city than to the committee. I don't know whether I should address the city manager, the assistant city manager, but you mentioned that the $20,000 for supplies has yet to be expended, and you also recommended that the influenza-related supplies be high on that list of supplies purchased. I wonder where that stands currently. Do we have plans to purchase that, those supplies, and would they also? I would agree with you that giving priority to the pandemic flu-related things would be probably a good idea. What little I know about this area.
We're trying to identify what we can get from the county, because they have gotten grants for some of the things, like the mask that have to be worn by police officers and whatnot. Once we've done that, then we'll put together the other things we need, and the staff feeds it to me. I would guess soon after the first of the year, we'll have some kind of start purchase and stuff that we need.
Okay, I appreciate that. I always appreciate your interest in not expending money that we don't have to. But I do think we should move forward on this, because, you know, the flu season is upon us already.
Any other questions? Carrie?
Thank you. First, I just really appreciate the report, you presenting the report. It's very well organized, and it's very helpful in seeing, you know, what you hope to accomplish and how you're doing against those goals. I look forward to, you know, what would I like to see? I think you've identified a whole lot of things to work on for the coming six months. I don't, I think of anything right offhand that, you know, I want to add to this, but I certainly would like to see your goals and your calendar in your terms, so that we can then see where you are six months from now, when you come back, or three months from now, I'm not sure. We still, we've talked about maybe having quarterly reports from very active committees such as yours. You know, several topics came up tonight that I really wasn't expecting to talk about, but I just wanted to mention to the flow of consciousness here. Councilmember Clay had mentioned window stickers, and I wonder if that isn't something that we could use in lieu of neighborhood contacts? And it's something maybe the fire department, I know they in the past have done that with window stickers for the children's rooms, as you said, for different things. And that might be something that I would like to voice support for.
You can ask our fire department contact about that. You mean the kind of window stickers that are used for, does it have to be rescued here? Why not use them for people that also have a-
Well, they used to use those for people. Our house still has a window sticker for, to say there's children in this room. You know, it's no longer a program, the sticker is half-gone, but it was a program that was in place when we had kids living in the room.
Or animals in the house, please save them. Along that same idea.
Same idea. Or there's an invalid in this, in this particular room. So it identifies, you know, the window of the room where there's specific contention needed. And it's the same concept that might be used for the example that councilmember Clay mentioned with a disabled person in the house, and we need special attention during an emergency, such as someone on a dialysis machine or something that required ongoing power, even when, you know, there's power outage.
Thank you.
Anyway, just a, just a, another suggestion to throw in the hat, if you talk about that next week. On the Alert Tacoma, I was just going to comment, again, I appreciated what councilmember Clay was saying. I think one of the hesitancies that some people have in getting on listservs like that is the transaction volume that they might get. And so, you know, wherever you're advertising, it's probably important to give them a feel that it's a very limited amount of information that's coming across that. I think the people who organize and monitor that do very well at keeping the discussion over on the alert discussion list and using the alert list itself just for alerts, things that are ongoing incidents that need special attention.
Okay.
But I think when people, when I think about signing up for listserv, I always worry about how many messages am I going to get? And I'm real reluctant to get on unless I have a comfort level with the transaction volume, so that I think that should be part of any advertisement.
Okay.
You've mentioned membership. One of the issues, and I don't know, I may have mentioned this in my email to you, but one of the issues that has come up to me several times is the, your meeting schedule. And I know that you were meeting during the daytimes, during weekday daytimes, which is advantageous to staff members and county employees, but not so advantageous to attracting community members to participate in the committee. And as this committee started out at least to be an advisory, a residence or citizen's advisory committee to this council, I strongly encourage you to revisit that schedule and schedule it during hours when most of the residents of this city could have time available to participate. And that doesn't require an answer at this point, but it's certainly a strong encouragement on my part. The CERT training, the, you know, I've wanted to sign up for that and participate in that, but I have found that, you know, the one rule in there, which is that you have to attend all meetings in the program, to have been impossible every time there has been a conflict with at least one of the dates when I've been unable to attend. This last one, I said, well, in November is going to be a good time. It's going to work out great with my schedule. And then, as it turns out, right before the program started, a couple of days before, there was a death in the family, I had to go to a funeral, and wasn't going to be able to attend the very first session, so, again, I didn't sign up. Again, I don't expect an answer tonight, but I think that might be something, there was some way to provide some flexibility in that. That would be something that might help community members participate more in that program.
You're certainly right, that it's a significant barrier, that the CERT requires two Saturdays, two Tuesdays, two Thursdays, and attend all of them. You know, it's a very large commitment. Our committee members have advocated to the county, is there any way to do a CERT light? Is there any way to do something that would make it just two evenings? It's difficult, you're fitting in CPR, a variety of things. So to get the CERT Good Housekeeping seal, they feel that they're as minimum as they can. We'll continue to explore what other kinds of lower threshold training could be offered to have a citizen role in preparedness that is helpful to the preparedness or response of the people of Tacoma Park that is not CERT? Because the barriers is great.
Yeah, I'm not looking for CERT light, I'm looking for CERT flexible.
Ah.
It was the same amount of training, but maybe there's an opportunity to make up for, you know, there was-
I do happen to know that that exists.
That does very well exist. You can miss a class of two and make it up in the next class. They'll be as flexible as possible with you. I missed my final exam, if you will, up at the academy, and went two weeks, a month later with some instructors from Good Council High School and just had a blast, and then got certified. So you can miss classes. Let the instructors know, though, and they'll work with you any way they can.
Where is that class given again? Is that given up at the Public Service Training Academy? Typically, all parts of it are there. We have been able to negotiate twice for a down-county location for everything except the final day, where you really need to have the buildings and the setup that they have there to do your practical exercise.
That is going to change, because the Public Safety Academy is going to be under construction for the next 18 months, and they're not, at this point in time, as a couple of days ago, they're not sure where it's going to be given at this point in time for the winter sessions, but we'll get word out absolutely using our listservs and-
They'd make it a great place for disaster training.
Yes. What else can we do for you?
I have one other, one other question, and that is, you know, one of my concerns with this committee for quite a while has been its role as an advisory committee. And a lot of the work that you talk about, you talk in terms of, you know, we are working on this, we are working on that. And I just wonder how much of this is a, is a production committee and how much is an advisory committee? How much are you, how do you make that distinction? How do you divide the work? How much is the committee actually doing and how much is the committee advising?
Well, because you asked me that, I did prepare a breakdown about how we spend our time. Yeah, off the top of my head, about percentage of how we spend our time, I estimate that we spend about 10% of our time on governance and planning of our own activities, about another 10% on tracking, you know, where we are. About 40% of our time on working side-by-side with and advising, I mean, we're working together in subcommittees looking at plan, for example. About 40% on advising the city staff about planning, and about 40% on outreach. In the last period, we probably spent 10% of our time talking about what should I report to the council? So it wasn't, you know, preparing recommendations for the council was not a big part of our work in the past six months. In the first six months, we considered it a much larger part of our work because we were reviewing the plan, which we considered as information to bring to council. Does that help?
Thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate the presentation. It's been very helpful.
I appreciate your time.
Joy, do you have a question?
I do. I can, I can provide more on these, but I would just like to run them by you with the council here. Given that you have some vacancies, I had a couple of thoughts. One is having the meetings at Victory Tower when your group meets, I guess it's 8:30 a.m. And Victory Tower is a place where people are very interested in emergency preparedness and public safety and are, would love to be involved. It also is a beautiful facility for meetings, so those two things together, you know, are something that I'd run by Victory Tower residents, and they would love to host these, these meetings, this type of meeting. The other idea is, since you're looking for people who are apartment dwellers, and we have a recent state of condo conversion, I know, I hope it's not prejudiced to say this, but a lot of times volunteers on our committees are homeowners. And so if you want to get apartment dwellers who are homeowners, then maybe the condo, the condo dwellers would be folks that would be interested in investing their time on the committee. And the other thought I had, kind of bridging what some council members are saying about this informal network and the more formal training, I would love to see a map of where we have CERT people living, where we have neighborhood safety contact people living, if they're still in the area. But, you know, they were previously interested, so where are they? How does it map out where we have orange hat patrol members living? And really just look at our saturation, see what our coverage looks like. I would think that at a minimum, we could use that network of people to immediately subscribe lots of people to the Alert Tacoma list, and that that would be a very simple thing that people could do, just making phone calls to this network of people and, you know, hopefully doubling our numbers in short order. The last thing I would say, this has all been terrific, and I echo what other people have said. I think you all are rolling on great, and if you need our guidance, my view of where advisory boards need our guidance is when they start to spend money. But in general, they can take action, you know, as long as it's within council policy for them to do activities and outreach and all of the things that you're doing. But I have a sense of urgency about seeing this get nailed down as soon as possible. We really don't know what our chances are of something happening, but the sooner we have a plan in place that we feel good about and that we can build on, and, you know, the better off we will be, the better, the more defensible it will be for the city government as well as our committee members who are investing so much of your time in this. And I'd really like to see it happen as soon as possible. I'm glad that the half FTE is now being devoted to it. I hope that that moves things along faster, and I would appreciate an update in three months if that was possible. A lot of the things that we raised, some of the guidelines that you've talked about measuring, I'd love to hear where things are. If you want to just, you know, provide that by paper, that's fine.
Okay.
But I'd love to know more as soon as you have more to tell us.
Do you have any?
And it sounds like we could be helpful to you in helping to recruit people, as Colleen suggested, for the Alert Tacoma system as well, if we might be able to try and help recruit some members to fill your vacancies.
Right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Austin Lane, there's a map already being worked on about locations. Wookiee Burger and I are working on that. So, hope to have that in the next couple, couple of weeks. Certs are green, safety contacts are red dots.
Well, we look forward to getting that. Thank you, we appreciate this very much.
Can I make a very brief statement, a very brief, and I'm going to get in trouble for this, I'm probably smacked right now, but working with Stacy Baker as the chair, co-chair of this committee, and certainly Wayne Hobbs, both tremendous professionals, tremendous with their organization, and have kept this committee on target, kept us moving, moving, working, working, working. And anybody's work with me, you know that's not easy to do. Many times I've called Stacy, late at night, whatever, Mr. Hobbs, I pop into his office on my days off, and we have discussions, and it's greatly appreciated. And it's a pleasure to work with such professionals and how dedicated they are. I've been on many committees, as you know, and in many political campaigns, and I consider this a campaign, but I, I've never worked with people who can keep you on such focus and such target, and it's helped this committee get where it's gotten. We've come a long ways in a year because of our co-chairs, that's sort of the dedication of the other members of the committee.
Well, thank you, buddy, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I would, I would add my thanks also.
No, I didn't see your smacky yip.
By the way, that is my name, isn't next to a whole lot of items in the work plan, so it's a very active committee with a lot of people willing to do much work.
Thank you. We're now moving on to the final item. Since, since we're talking about future items, it looks like we're going to lose Mark, who is not going to take the absolute bitter end.
Night, Mark, thank you.
Mark is sick.
You, you will see us soon enough.
Do you guys remember finding me?
Oh, yes, we do.
Multiple places. And you can always enter something on University Boulevard, do you need to meet with us?
Okay.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
All right, we have two additional items. The first one is a follow-up to the previous discussion we had on the plan to permit city employees to take loans from the deferred compensation plan.
What we did with the papers, tried to answer the questions that were posed at the last session, I don't know how successful we were, but we outlined the provisions of the proposed loan program as we, that we are recommending to you. And if you want me to, I can go through each of these, or-
Are there questions from the council? I mean-
I think-
Go ahead.
I looked over all the materials, and it seems to me like we should go with the recommendation to allow the staff to have loans for any purpose and use the, what's it called, the ACH system, so that the, our staff don't have to process all the payroll or deductions and, and manage the loans. That seems to be like the, the mechanism that gives the employees the most control over what is basically their own money, and has the, the least, the least amount of impact on our own staff.
And I appreciate the restrictions that you've put on it, because it seems as if this would prevent people from sort of getting in over their heads with this debt. You restricted it by amount, by timeframe, and had automatic payment provided, so that takes care of the concerns that I had.
Okay.
Are there any other council issues? Okay, thank you. The final item on our agenda is a proposed closed session. This is another discussion of matters related to collective bargaining. This is pursuant to an annotated Code of Maryland State Government Article Section 10-508A9. Someone want to move the proposed closed session? Who said, I didn't. Okay. Doug Barry said second. Okay. All those in favor of the closed session, just please raise your hand. All those opposed? At the conclusion of the closed session, we'll adjourn for the evening.